The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure a productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment. But the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and are available for anyone to review. Kristen?
Bob Jones, Mike Future, and Jessica Vanquart are present this evening. I'm Kristen Powers. Everybody else who's here, I've got down Mark Simon. And I have no additions this evening. I think, I don't have too much information. I thought, I think that Rich had more of the details on the truck auction, but I can briefly summarize it. It just probably won't be as robust of an update.
Okay.
Did anybody else have anything else to add?
No, sounds good.
And the minutes that need approval are from our last meeting of September 17.
I'll move that we approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carrie. Ethan, you have the floor, please.
Just one quick item. I was gonna say it in the announcements, but, sorry, Ethan. With our fancy new system, until we get everything all set up, we ask that any public comments, I was gonna say commentators, use the microphone. So, just for the whole presentation experience. So, before you speak this evening, you'll just need to use that microphone. Thank you.
So, I'll try to keep this fairly brief. We just wanted to provide you all an update on the current status of the Rutland Regional Plan. Currently, we have entered Phase Two of our planning process, and we're looking for final adoption in 2026. So, still some time left to go. But we're kind of at this midway phase where initially, our first phase was basically complete public outreach. We haven't written anything. We want to hear from you. Now that we've done all that feedback, we've drafted some initial drafts of content, some initial drafts of policies. And now, we're coming back and saying, you know, did this hit the mark? Did this miss the mark? You know, there's still plenty of time to change things, to modify, so we're sort of seeking feedback on the current draft policies. And I guess, just to back up a second, explain what Rutland Regional Plan is. It's a document which is adopted by the commission every eight years. It's on the same schedule as town plans. Effectively, a comprehensive plan to guide and accomplish coordinated and efficient community economic development in the region balances economic development with social, cultural, and environmental priorities. And I note, I'll add at the same time, for us, we're looking at this document as much as an organization about how we can actually achieve these goals. Often, in past years, they've set a bunch of sort of lofty goals, but they weren't always things which were sort of necessarily achievable. So, we're really looking at goals that are sort of measurable, attainable, and, you know, something that we, as an organization, can actually help to accomplish. So, I'll give a quick recap of Phase One. We went to every single town, all the select boards, and the One Board of Aldermen to give initial presentations. And here, we're in the second phase of that. And we did 21 pop-up events, where we basically just set up tables, and rather than asking folks to take time out of their busy days to come and see us, we saw them where they were. And we held several open houses, and we also had a survey, which garnered over 1,200 responses. So, now, we're in Phase Two. We're doing sort of slightly less pop-ups, but we still wanted to come to every select board and the Board of Aldermen and sort of give an update on the process. So, we have five pop-ups, sort of smaller scale. We went to actually the Wells Rumberg Sale recently, got some really great conversations with folks, as well as the pastor there. And we have a survey, which is on our website, and there's a QR code link to where you can see all of the current draft policies and provide feedback about whether you disagree, whether you think things are missed, whether you think this is heading in the right direction. So, we've also summarized the response from our public engagement effectively as well, and that will be on our surveys, as well as included in these packets. So, now, we're really looking, like I said, feedback on the current draft policies. And that's about all I have for tonight. So, within these packets, there are actually all of the summaries of all the community engagement activities, as well as all the current draft policies. Feel free to reach out to me. You can find my contact on our website. My email is ethan@rutlandrpc.org. You can also, like I said, check out our website and reach out anyway. So, love to hear feedback from you all, basically, on the current draft of the plan. And that's about all I have for tonight. So, thank you.
Frank?
There was a meeting. Hello, testing. There was a meeting the other night. I attended it. It was an in-person meeting, and you're gonna have another one when?
On 30th of October.
30th of October.
Yeah.
And they had good pizza there.
Oh, excellent.
So, and they welcome anybody to go up there to Evelyn Street, which is their new building, their new offices, and to discuss all of this through that meeting, and it's very well organized.
Yes, thank you. And I'll also add that we have virtual participation, so if anybody sort of wants to tune in and get a more in-depth presentation from each of the chapter authors, you're welcome to tune in. Either visit us at our office on 16 Evelyn Street, or come tune in virtually. So, all the details of that are on the Rutland Regional Planning Commission website.
Anybody else have any questions for Ethan? Frank?
The only thing I was wondering is if there was a category breakout for health and welfare, or if that wouldn't be considered land use from a planning perspective?
So, I believe that's our utilities and public facilities chapter. But health, equity, and resilience are the themes of our entire plan, so those are woven into the entire plan. But health, from the perspective of, you know, the actual medical facilities, is really part of the public facilities chapter. But, for example, you know, transportation, how do you get to a doctor's appointment? There's a program in the Rutland region called the Older Adults and Persons with Disabilities Transportation System, which provides on-demand rides to medical equipment and some sort of social, personal trips as well, to help with mental health. So, health is a big theme, and it's sort of tackled from a lot of different angles, from everything from transportation to the actual public facilities to recreation, you know, what helps, you know, people stay mentally healthy and getting outside, getting that physical activity. So, yeah, there's not a specific section, but it's woven through the whole document.
Was that the one that Devin did?
Yes. Yes.
They're doing their best.
Well, I guess, if no one else has any more questions, Ethan, thank you very much for coming down and sharing that with us tonight, and we'll continue to work with you through this, the rest of this plan and build on it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Any announcements? Anything from the zoning administrator?
Yes. So, Nancy shared that there have been 28 permits total year-to-date in 2024. Document scans are complete through 2002. Notification is being prepared for short-term rental property owners with a registration deadline of January 1st, 2025. Nancy received an announcement for tree maintenance and removal grants, and if there is a need, she can apply for the grants. She recalled that on Cemetery Hill, identified by the Palat Historical Society, there was one for removal. She doesn't know if this was ever addressed, but this grant, if approved, could help cover those costs, and Nancy is providing the paperwork to the board for review.
I don't recall the outcome of that tree situation.
It never got taken down, did it? Do you know, Sue?
On the cemetery?
Yeah, the one that was gonna, that's hanging over the chapel there.
I don't know, but I've been there.
It's like a year ago, Judy and Rose were here, talking with us about it, and trying to determine whose it really was, and they talked to the power company, and they said, oh, no, it's not us, of course.
Or maybe, maybe we can see if Nancy's up for it, would want to contact the Historical Society to see.
Judy and Rose. So, you skipped your meeting, Planning Commission, right?
Yeah, we canceled our meeting, so there won't be a review.
Okay. Vote for them.
Yes. So, Damon, I heard from Damon this evening, and most recently, Damon and Jim, which has been going really well with Jim, they've been hauling winter materials to West Palat. They've been working on ditching and have completed ditch work on Beaver Brook Road, Andrus Road, Deer Run, and Warren Switch. They've begun ditch work on Briar Hill Road, and upcoming projects, until we meet again, are including more ditch work and continued hauling of winter material for the roads. I spoke a little bit, too, with Damon. He is hoping to continue with their summer hours through the month of October, and then switching over to their winter hours in November. And I asked also if he had spoken with Haynes Tree Care about the grant that we've received, the highway safety improvement for the tree removal on the North Palat Road. And John is planning to get us on his agenda in November. There's a very, like, small window of time with that grant of when tree removal can happen, so we're on the agenda for that. And I had said executive session, which I don't know if the board has other personnel items to talk about in executive session, but there's nothing that needs to necessarily be an executive session specifically regarding the Highway Department, but we are still searching for a third member of the Highway Department. And with winter coming up, I feel like it's, we should probably try to emphasize that a bit more. So, I went online, and the posting is still live on the website, and I requested, and Deb kindly did that. She sent it out in her e-blast and then put it back on the town's Facebook page, the job posting. But if anybody has any ideas of people we might be able to reach out to who could be interested, or other ways, I know it's, that's been a struggle of the ways to get it out there. I mean, we've tried the papers, and we've tried, you know, different online forums and things like that, and I think that we've really historically mostly benefited from word of mouth. So, if anybody out there has any ideas of anybody that might like to join the Highway Department, please do send them our way. And if everybody wants to just sort of consider, you know, other creative approaches to drumming up applicants, I was like, I could stand up, you know, with a sandwich board. Tom's got something.
Yes, you do.
I did see the ad, I think it was on Facebook. I did see the ad on Facebook. Just a suggestion, it said benefits.
Yes.
Didn't really say what kind of benefits. I know people that are in that position want to know what they're stepping into.
Yeah.
So, that might be something to add to the article.
Put a little bit more bait out there, huh? Julie?
I have three questions. I'll start at the bottom. So, my idea, Election Day, maybe changing that sandwich board, or having flyers or things that are available for people that come in the building, as far as, like, the job posting, so that they could take it, spread the word, or take it for themselves. Second question, and I don't think you guys will have the answer, but I would like to get one. The Beaver Brook and Andrus Drive intersection culvert, that has Jersey barriers around it, is there a plan to fix that before winter, or is that just gonna be like that for a while?
That's something you can talk to Damon about. Okay.
And then, the third question was, as far as the winter hours, I don't remember what your policy is, if it is that it starts in October, if it starts in November, but if you're going out of policy, you might want to make that an action item where you temporarily, voluntarily go out of policy, so that, or change your policy. Just housekeeping.
That's a good thought.
We can check the policy for next time.
Yeah, I'll check, we can check the policy. I had that exact same thought.
I think it might be November, but I cannot remember.
When he had said that he had hoped to wait until November 1st to start, I just did a non-committal thumbs up, just because I was, I had the same thought. Like, I couldn't recall if it was somewhere set in stone, or if it was kind of up to the mercy of, or the expert opinion.
Discretion.
Of the discretion of the foreman.
I think it's in policy as well.
Okay. And that's all for the Highway Department.
Okay.
Oh, did you have a brief summary of the truck auction?
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, we both have the same light bulb. Okay. So, the town truck that had been up for auction, it went on to Auctions International and, over the winter, and drew a very low bid. So, the board had discussed it and had determined to wait until we could get some more flashy and appealing photos, put it back out to bid in the summer, which we did. Turns out, the photos were not the culprit of the lower bids. It didn't do much else. So, Auction International had reached out and said, what were you hoping to get for it? And my understanding is that Rich gave him a number of what the board had discussed in the past, of what we hoped that we could get for the truck. They had said that they would reach out to the high bidder, because there were just very few bids on it, which is why it was never, it never was elevated. So, the high bidder, my understanding is that the high bidder was not interested in going any higher than what their highest bid was. And so, now, the town just needs to get back to them and say, you know, no, we don't want to proceed, or yes, we do. Some of the conversations that have taken place outside of the meetings, just between the highway liaisons and the foremen, were that perhaps we might be able to get more out of it by, like, putting it on the side of the road with a first sale sign, or, again, trying to market it instead of just putting it up on the Auctions International website, like, you know, sharing it more locally. But I think for right now, the board needs to determine what they'd like to do with the Auctions International, because there, I did request an extension of the timeline as it stood. They were hoping that we'd get back to them sooner, but I think we do need to let them know what we'd like to do for now.
Sue?
What kind of truck, what truck is it?
It was a...
That's all I'm gonna say.
I'll hold it through.
It was the last tandem international truck. In progression, was replaced by this, this new truck that we just received a few months ago.
Thank you.
So, I don't know what the numbers were, but Rich has been watching it, and he kind of has a handle for what he feels it's worth. Was he, did he think we should probably decline, decline the auction?
Yeah. That was my takeaway.
Well...
From a little bit, I've been involved in it, but...
Oh, and it's not like we're, we instantly need to get money from it to use for something else, so we do have time.
And it sounds gonna spoil, so... Okay, keep it, see if we can get a little bit more than that.
Yeah, I just think we haven't got the right market for it, but we will.
What's that?
We will get the right market for it, and it'll go.
Right, if we can find the right, or maybe going into winter, somebody...
It's all set up with the wing and plow and everything.
Somebody will be more excited. So, you wanna make that a motion that we decline that?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. To decline the Auction International offer and keep the truck. Is somebody in the waiting room?
Thank you. Got it. I will pass that information back along to the highway.
Okay. Any more discussion about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carrie.
Okay.
Okay. What do we got next? Anything from the assessors for this meeting? Town clerk. Deb, would you like to read your memo, please?
Yeah. As you can see, the Peg TV install has happened, and everything is mostly in place. There was a couple of things that they have to come back for, but not, nothing any, anything big. There's one Department Liquor Lottery application for you guys to approve tonight. Early voting ballots are starting to come in, so we are up and running with the election. And I'll be out next week. If anybody needs me, I won't be available. So, anyway, that's it. If anybody has anything else for me, I don't think I have anything else.
Frank?
Question two.
Okay, go ahead.
Does Palat own this equipment now, or is it Peg TV's equipment?
It is Palat's equipment.
Yeah.
For use for any meetings that we have in the future, we can be, somebody can come down and train us on using it. There's a station inside my office, if anybody gets a chance to go and take a peek. It's, it's, it's pretty decent. So, moving forward, we'll be able to have a lot of meetings that we can run on our own without Bill having to come and do it.
Following up is, I noticed that the equipment in there looks rather expensive, what they put in. Would we have to insure it in some way? If we, if, you know, would we have to add something to the insurance policy to, or advise the insurance carrier that we have this equipment?
We can certainly get an approximate valuation from the company that did the install, or from Tom, the executive director at Peg TV, and find out what the value is, and just let BLCT know that we have this equipment on site now, so that it is covered.
All right, good. Somebody wanna make that?
Okay, yeah, I'll move that we approve the liquor license for Haystack Catering LLC.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carrie. Okay, thank you for joining us tonight. Have a good evening.
Yes, you too. Thank you.
Julie?
Hi. First, right off the bat, I'm incredibly embarrassed, looking at this, that I didn't do my breakdown of the allocation of the money from which fund. I, I just have dollar signs and no numbers, and I did not catch that, so I'm super sorry. But I can tell you that the appropriations were 114,000 of that 145 number, so it's not a large amount of money spent from any of those other funds. I am embarrassed, and I'm sorry. Two warrants, payrolls $9,908.82, and accounts payable is $145,703.17. We do need to set a date for a budget meeting, and I know we usually like to do, like, October, November. I know sometimes you guys like to travel in November, so, and then, voting is on the 5th, and then you have meetings the 12th, and then the 26th. So, I don't know if you want to try to do an alternate Tuesday, or if you want to try to shoot for a different day of the week. And we don't have to make that decision tonight, but I want you guys to, like, think about it and come up with something. I can try to send around an email poll or something, however you guys want to do that.
Do you guys have any?
I mean, I like, I like the off Tuesdays. That works well for me, because I never have anything on Tuesdays.
That's fine.
So, what day would that be that's...
That would be the 19th.
The 19th.
Of November.
November 19th.
Yeah, good.
All right, let's, let's do it.
Okay. So, November 19th. And then, I gave you the breakdown of property on the top, and then wastewater after first collection. And then, below that, I had a comparison, just so you could see how we stand compared to last year and this year, and we're pretty, pretty much on point. So, we're, we're doing well there. The only other things that I have that I didn't put on there, I have a few other things that I missed off of there. We did get a $5,000 election grant that Deb applied for, so we have that cash in hand. We have to spend it or return it to them, and I think Deb's got several ideas, and hopefully, we'll be able to, like, spend that down. I would like to schedule a time to meet with the Berkshire Wealth Management person that helps us as far as, like, reinvesting, because we have moved some money out for the truck upfitting. And then, we also have now the appropriations that we could reinvest, and I didn't know if Jessica would like to try to schedule a time to go down with me and meet with her and make some determinations.
I would like to do that, like how we did last time.
Okay.
I imagine that also, some of our options might have changed because the Fed has changed interest rates.
Right. And so, it might make sense to lock things in a little bit longer term. So, with that said, that might be good for you and I to work on something between now and the next meeting, so that decisions can be made.
Yeah, let's schedule a time before the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. And then, the last thing I wanted to just ask of all board members is to just do a little bit better job of looping me in on financials, like the kerfluffle with the truck title, and also, a delay in paying the final bill on the truck was because members have received emails that they just assume I also have, and then, I'm not looped in, and then, people on the other end don't know what's happening, and I don't know what's happening, and it causes delays and confusion. So, I know there are some things that you guys hold to your chest, because it's not ready for public consumption until it is. I'm not the public, and I need to be included. So, I just would like to ask that we try to do a little bit better job of looping me in earlier than later.
Okay. Goodie's in there.
He'll figure it out.
Okay. That's a good time to do it.
Anybody have any other questions for Julie?
I move that we approve payroll warrant 25021 and accounts payable warrant 25022.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carrie. Okay, thank you, and we'll keep that in mind when purchases of that, like, need to be made, that you need to be directly involved in, in the forefront. So, thank you. And that's it. Before the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. And then the last thing I wanted to just ask of all board members is to just do a little bit better job of looping me in on financials, like the, the kerfluffle with the truck title. Um, and also a delay in paying the final bill on the truck was because members have received emails that they just assume I also have. And then I'm not looped in, and then people on the other end don't know what's happening, and I don't know what's happening. And it causes delays and confusion, so um I know there are some things that you guys hold to your chest because it's not ready for public consumption until it is. I'm not the public and I need to be included. So I just would like to ask that we try to do a little bit better job of looping me in earlier than later.
Okay. Goodie's in there.
He'll figure it out.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions for Julie?
I move that we approve payroll warrant two five zero two one and accounts payable warrant two five zero two two.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Post, Carrie. Okay, thank you, and we'll keep that in mind when, when purchases of that like need to be made, that you need to be directly involved in, in the forefront. So, thank you. And that's it. Emergency management directors, anything going on? You gotta get that, bring that back.
There is.
I'll let you bring that back.
Okay. Let's see. Well, well, I'm getting a thumbs up from our IT specialists. Oh, that's nice. Okay. Alright, well, while we're working on that, um Bob Merlino attended several virtual sessions during the emergency management preparedness concert. Sorry, not a concert, conference. Um, and also attended, got music on, right? Um, and also attended the Rutland emergency management meeting. Bob Merlino was notified that the town of Politt's radio repeater frequency Hold on, I can audity test. Sorry, everyone, we're back. Okay. Bob was notified that the town of Politt's radio repeater frequency does not have an FCC license. This was contracted to be done by Adirondack Two Way Radio nine years ago, but they failed to file with the FCC.
Okay.
The repeater has been temporarily shut off until the vendor can reapply for the FCC license.
I think we should get our money back from that Two Way Radio.
So. I have nothing else to add other than that, so, but that's all for Bob Merlino. I don't think it's very important. The really internet, because it keeps popping in and out. I'm gonna just wait, yeah. On fourth, oh. Not an emotional roller coaster. Okay, Jennifer did have something to add.
Once she gets back on.
Um, so maybe when, if we get back online.
Yeah, okay.
And I know that Jill just sent out the usual email with the test results.
Right, but nothing, no, no stories to go with it, so.
That's right.
No, it was just good news. Facilities, everything in the facility seemed to be?
Meg Campbell. Oh, right. Um, last week Meg Campbell came by from the Historical Preservation Trust to look at both buildings. Sue was here to represent, looking at the library, and I was, sort of, kind of. And I was here to represent the um, the town hall, and we were able to tell her that basically nothing nothing of note has been done to either building in the last year. Um, she did, I don't know if she had anything else further after I left. Sue, but she did say that one, the one, two things that she noticed, and I, she will have this written up in her report, I believe, but is that the trees and shrubs on that side of the building are encroaching on it, and they need to be trimmed back. And Sue, you said that, then you spoke to the neighbor on that side who is fine if we trim them back. And the other thing was that on, also on that side, the paint, if you, if you look at it sometime if you stand over that way and look up on the second story, the paint is peeling off quite a bit, but only in that spot. And so we need to arrange to get that side of the building repainted sometime in the next year.
Okay.
Um, it might, there might be some sort of water leakage that is causing it to peel. Or it might be, she said, that it was not prepared properly before being painted, but that we, that does need to be taken care of.
The library, everything seemed to be fine with the library?
Yeah, it's just the same lip spot in the children's room, so.
Okay. Okay, so now we just got to arrange to have somebody cut that brush back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's fine, it's fine with Cheryl. I talked to Cheryl about the cost. She said, fine, who'd you want to cut it at?
Okay.
Julie has her hand in.
Julie?
For the painting, would that need to go out to bid? Do we have, I don't know if we have a policy on when things go out to bid.
We've tried to, but have very little success with anybody other than Lux, even coming to look at the project.
So then we might want to call Lux over the winter and get it on the, their schedule for spring next year, right?
Yeah, more than likely. It should, it should be something that we should reach out to contractors prior to, to next year for certain.
Yeah, and I, when I was talking to Meg and Sue, I got the impression that we had at one point, this is before I got on the board, that there had been a concept of painting one side of the building on the rotating schedule, something like that, so I don't know if we want to.
We, we have looked, and that's the way we did a lot of the sides. We were, we were working around, but we'd gotten around and, and the they'd looked pretty decent for a while, but I think we start to, need to start those rotations.
Yeah, we'll start, start with that side.
Alright, the idea was to spread it out, like say, you know, each side of the building every year, so that you would keep, keep it freshened up in theory, but the problem is to move in the equipment and to come here with a crew just to paint one side of the building. It's hard to justify
Yeah.
moving a big man left in and everything else, so then we, we end up trying to say, well, does it make more sense to do two sides of the building than and wait a couple of years and do the other two sides of the building type of thing, so.
Mm-hmm.
There's several options. There are several things we've tried.
I guess one, so, but we do need to start reaching out for contractors, I would say, and get, get some information, and then they'll tell us what would be the most cost-effective way to, to deal with it, so. Have to keep that on the shortlist. And anything, other than that, everything seems to be fine? School board, Julie, do you have anything from the school board tonight or not?
I didn't bring my prepared report, but um I can just mention we we skipped our regular August meeting and we skipped our regular September meeting, and we met and had um a board retreat, which we have annually, where we review our norms and update our goals. And uh monitored several policies, looked at our end policies, which is basically like the big picture ask of what we want from our school system. And our next meeting will be October fourteenth, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day in Rupert.
I guess we're down to older unfinished business.
Okay, grant updates. I have, I do have some updates on two of our outstanding grants. First is the Municipal Energy Resilience Program Grant. That's the MERP grant. Um, which I know I had spoken out about, a bit about two meetings ago. It's the one where we can get up to five hundred thousand dollars with no match for um weatherization and energy upgrades to both the town hall and to the library. Um, Jeremy from Rutland Regional Planning Commission has gone ahead and written that grant, and he has submitted it. So it is a very generic grant at this point, just saying we're gonna do the things that are on the auditor, the auditor said we could do some things, and he just put in the grant that we were gonna do those things. Once we, hopefully we'll receive it, because we are very high on the list of towns that are prioritized for this. At that point, we would go through and we would um go into much more detail with the, the grant agreement. So, at this point, there's nothing else that we need to do. Um, one thing that I have done is I went and I presented to the library board at one of their previous meetings about the, um, the grant possibilities for the library, because um, a hundred thousand dollars of this grant would be um set aside for ADA improvements, which I think I mentioned before. And so I put to the library trustees that they should start thinking about what kind of ADA improvements might best suit the library building, and um, I also spoke a little bit about this grant with Meg when she was here, because she will need to be put in touch with whoever's doing the work for us once we do any kind of insulation, anything. All that stuff has to be run past the preservation trust. So that's the MERP grant stuff. Any questions on that?
Sounds like a good thing.
Yeah, and it's, they're trying to turn it around really fast. They need to get the money, the state needs to get the money out to towns by the end of this year. So we will know, yeah, because it's their, our money for, that the state got, and they have to obligate it by the end of this year. Just like how we had to obligate ours. Um, so we will know probably within a month if we get the grant funding and how much we get. We don't have to spend it before the end of the year, but they, and it will be, oh, and um this is important for Julie to know. Um, we would get the money upfront. This is not a reimbursement grant. I know, right? Yes, we, there was, there was a box to check to say um economic hardship, because five hundred thousand dollars that we would have to pay upfront for the size of our budget would be too much. So we just checked the box and they would give it to us outside. So that's nice. Alright, so um the other, the other grant was the one about the crosswalks, which we approved earlier this year, the engineering firm VHB to start working on. Um, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and I and Peter Pochop from Vtrans had our first meeting um virtually with them, and the engineers are currently drawing up their initial ideas. I was impressed with their professionalism, and all of their ideas for what to do with the bridge area are entirely at grade. So mostly it means like they would paint off an area that would be for pedestrians, and this seems very reasonable. And I'm, I know that we were, have been a lot very worried about it going over budget. But if everything that's going across the bridge is not, doesn't have to be paid for with like a sidewalk or anything, and they're just gonna like paint a pedestrian area, my fingers are crossed. The, the trickier bit will be the um will be the sidewalk, the bit that would go up toward the church. But they have a couple of different ideas for that as well. Um, by about two or three weeks from now, they should have all their different concepts drawn up. And then the, the meeting with the public is gonna be, we scheduled it for slightly a weird time, November sixteen, which is a Saturday afternoon, and the reason we went for a Saturday afternoon is because they wanted to do a site walk beforehand. So like invite all interested parties to come and walk around and look at the area and talk about their plans. And we had to do it in daylight. So we were like, let's do a weeknight, and we looked and like, oh, it's gonna be four thirty when the sun sets. So yeah, we're gonna do that, that Saturday afternoon. And so it'll first be a site walk, and then there will be a public presentation here at the town hall, and all the notifications will go out for that, and that'll be in the in the um paper and everything. And at the, so that meeting will be them presenting their various concepts and getting feedback from the public and also from us.
That sounds good too.
Okay.
And the rail trail?
Oh, that's, um, there's no updates on that. I have to get them a little more information.
Um, the town, the town crew did go down and take all of the sumacs.
Those sumacs? Good, good.
Makes it looks quite a lot nicer already, so.
Yeah, so the, the only update I have on that is that I put in everything that we needed for the grant amendment. And Rupert is still getting their act together.
Mm-hmm.
So, because we are working together with them, I need to find out from Rupert exactly what size the parking lot they want to put in is and how many slots it will have, and but yeah, so I can hopefully get that squared away this week. And then we'll just have to get someone to build those, the little bench and the picnic bench and get them installed. That's all I've got. Oh, Julie has it.
Julie?
I was just wondering on the MERP grant, is there a timeframe which we have to spend the money, since we're getting it upfront?
There is a timeframe, but I think it's two years. And they fully acknowledge, I, I brought up the question. I brought up the question of, because what, what's gonna have to happen is that we would have to we would need to hire a firm that specializes in like green building stuff to design everything that needs to happen regarding insulation. Um, and there are only a couple of firms in Vermont that are qualified to do that. So they know that all the towns that get it will have to use these same firms, so they may be able to give extensions.
Anything other, else under old, their unfinished business?
Uh, has the heating system been reviewed for turning on for the wintertime?
Uh, not yet. I'll, I'll reach out to him about that.
Good thing to remember.
New business?
Um, something did just occur to me while we were going through our reports. I wonder if we might want to add a library report. We never hear from the library board, but what's going on with the library?
That seems like a good idea.
And two library board members are here tonight. I mean, not that they have to do an impromptu report, I'm just thinking that given that so much goes on with the library, it might be nice if we were kept apprised at our meetings, like once a month.
You guys up for that? You want to bring that back to the rest of trustees and see if you?
Yeah.
After your monthly meeting, you could come, someone could bring a report to the next, our next meeting, and and that way everybody.
Because with, good communication between our boards would be great.
Yep.
I thought it was on and maybe dropped off, but maybe.
It hasn't been on since I've been on the board, so, yeah.
Okay, yes, definitely.
Um, would you, would somebody from the library board like to confirm with me once you've discussed it with the rest of the board members, if that's something that you'd like to have added, and then I can add it to the next agenda?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Um, and we don't have, I'm happy to. I'm happy to. I'm just wondering also if we would need to create a policy, or if there needs to be somebody designated, like, cause I know that Harley as the chair usually is the conduit of communication, but I mean, if we don't have a policy in place already.
Probably something for you all to discuss at your next meeting, and see if you have an appetite for it and.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll be in touch with you then. Thank you.
Okay, and the new business, there's one other thing we need to discuss, the fact that we have a vacancy on the board, and we need to fill that. The Vermont law states that we need to appoint someone. So I would like to put it out there that if anyone was interested in filling the remainder of that term, to please send a letter of interest to Kristen. And at the next meeting, in two weeks, we will, we will vote to appoint someone to fill the vacancy until March. Does everybody else?
Yeah, can we ask Deb to send that information out to the usual places where she puts things, so that folks who don't listen to the meeting will know that it's, that's what we're doing?
Is that something you can do for us, Deb?
She may have.
If someone's trying to talk to me, I cannot hear. Okay.
Um, is, can you put out that we're gonna accept letters of interest to fill the vacancy on the board? And we're gonna decide at the next meeting, we'll appoint someone. So if anyone's interested, please send a letter of interest to uh Kristen.
This is, this is for the vacant select board seat?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Kristen, are you drafting that, or am I drafting that, or?
Uh, I can.
Oh, you're just, we're just asking people to submit letters of interest?
Yeah.
And that would be the remainder of a one-year term?
Yeah.
Who was just coming out of my office?
Somebody working with Peg TV and the internet.
Vinnie. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so I'm just gonna put out a blurb for it.
Okay, so I'm just gonna put out a blurb for anyone interested in filling the select board seat to submit a letter of interest to the select board.
Yes.
And it would just be through the, it would be until town meeting in March?
Right. And you want to advise the next select board meeting?
Yes. We're gonna appoint someone at the next select board meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I can put that out in the eBlast and on the Facebook page tomorrow, and let Sean, Sean Ruff know for the webpage.
Great, thank you. Frank?
You're welcome. Might reach out to, oops, maybe reach out to previous select board members to see if they want to step in at this point in time, that have held a position before.
Okay. Anything else under new business? Okay, we're gonna go in.
The equipment malfunction, oops, the equipment malfunction could happen at any time, and the law says that we must do hybrid, and I have, I'm in the dialogue still with the Secretary of State, the attorney for the Secretary of State, and I'll update you on that, because we do have an option to apply for a hardship, which would exempt us from any penalty, and you can develop your own policy then, and not have to adhere to the state law in that regard, and that's what I'm clarifying with the select board, with the Secretary of State's attorney.
Thank you. Executive session, it's not really necessary?
No.
Okay.
I was thinking that I would have some more personnel-related information regarding the highway, but we're just, we're seeking applicants, so.
We're just, we're just seeking applicants, okay.
So we're not looking at any?
We're not looking at any applications.
Okay.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.